noticed on February eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, through posting a notification of the press in accordance with Wisconsin nineteen point eight four. Uh, pledge allegiance, Commissioner Mollard.
Thank you, President Myers. Um, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Mister Kirk Krieger, principal at Franklin Middle School. Mister Krieger has spent his entire twenty-eight-year career here at the school district of Janesville. Kurt began his career as a physical education teacher at Roosevelt. He then went to Franklin School for nine years, where he taught health and was the academic learning coach. In two thousand nine, Kurt became the principal at Jefferson Elementary and was there for twelve years. This school year, Kurt accepted the position of principal at Franklin Middle School. Mister Krieger has a Bachelor's of Science from UW Lacrosse, a Master's in Education Leadership from Cardinal Stretch, and is currently working on his doctorate at Edgewood College. Mister Krieger, who have you brought with you this evening, sir?
Well, it is my pleasure to introduce Henry Flister. Come on up here, Henry. Henry is, um, one of the great students at Franklin and in our district. He's a seventh-grade student who loves basketball, no, football, basketball, golf, and track. He's well-respected by his peers and teachers. He's an eager learner, puts forth a lot of positive energy, um, and effort. He is a quiet leader. I asked Henry who his favorite principal was. His favorite subject that social is, uh, social studies with Mister Erickson. We'll skip right over the principal question. And we are just proud to call him, uh, one of Janesville's own. Thank you for coming in, Henry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great voice, Henry. Okay, um, so we're going to have a slight alteration to the agenda. Um, just a sec here. Let me find it. There we go. What's that? I was gonna include that in my, in the adoption. Um, so we are gonna switch, uh, three point one, we're gonna move it up to, uh, or excuse me, three point three, we're gonna move it up, um, to three point one and sort of flip those two, okay? So that we can, um, have the, uh, mass discussion, um, a little bit earlier. So, um, could I get a motion to adopt the agenda? Okay, it was Commissioner Hannah Wall and Commissioner Herta? Okay, um. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
No? Okay. Oh, okay. Okay, all right, Michelle got her aye in, so I think, right, we might need to take, um.
Sorry, must've been a little delay.
That's okay. I think we'll, we'll probably do a.
Yeah, she's.
Yeah, she's here. Okay, so I think we're going to probably do a roll call vote, um, since we have, uh, Commissioner Hayworth on the line from now on, okay? Okay, a safety message. Commissioner Hannah Wall.
Should've spoke about ICE, obviously, but. I had already written out my safety message for tonight. Um, what is the number one factor correlated to safety in accidents? Anybody wanna take a guess real quick? One-word factor? Clo- human what? Hu- human er- fatigue. Fatigue, fatigue results, and we're talking both physical and mental fatigue. Fatigue, fatigue results in slower reaction, reduced ability to process information, memory lapses, absent mindedness, decreased awareness, lack of weight, attention, underestimation of risk, and reduced coordination. Fatigue leads to error and accidents, ill health, injury, and reduced productivity. Driving, drought, excuse me, drowsy driving is impaired driving. But while we wouldn't allow a friend to drive drunk, how many of us have ever taken the keys away from somebody who's a little tired? Or say, hey, why don't you take a quick nap before you head out on the road? The National Council on Safety has gathered research, research on this and has found that you are three times more likely to be in an accident when you're fatigued. Losing two hours of sleep is the equivalent of having three drinks. And being awake for more than twenty hours is equivalent to being legally drunk. And know, I can speak for myself that there are times I've been, you know, awake over twenty hours and I've driven and wondered how I ended up where I got. What are the signs of fatigue at work? Moody-ness, decrease in productivity, lack of motivation, lack of concentration, judgment errors, accidents, excessive risk-taking, loss of memory, inability to recall details, loss of energy, things like that. And we're not talking about physical accidents, sometimes these are mental accidents. Put a wrong decimal point in the wrong place and I'm sure that Mister McCree would be saying, hey, what happened here? That wasn't supposed to be a hundred dollars, it's a thousand dollars. Wrong decimal point because we're tired. How do we reduce fatigue? Eat high carb, high, high complex carbohydrates and pro- protein. Avoid sugars. Eating sugars give you a quick little boost, but later catch up and hit you with your blood levels bottom out. Try to keep moving, short little walks, anything to get your blood circulating. If you can get outside, that's even better. Try a variety of activity when fatigue sets in. Go down, talk to somebody, go do something that you're not working on. Drink a glass of water. Water boosts energy and is better than the carbonated caffeinated drinks that we think. Make lifestyle changes. Fight fatigue, balance your schedule, plan things, work, family, social activities, so that you can manage your sleep. Eat nutritionally, avoid, limit caffeine, and exercise regularly. And since it is icy, I'll throw in, be careful when you're walking outside. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have our student presenters. Um, do we have David Cummings from Tagos? No? Oh, okay, so we have Andrew Hegel from Rocky University High School. Welcome, Andrew.
Hello, my name is Andrew Hegley. I am so glad I've been given this opportunity to tell you a little bit about myself and Rocky University High School. We currently have seventy-four students enrolled and, and we are projected to have eighty-five to a hundred students based on current applications for next year. I came to RUHS last year starting in tenth grade. I was homeschooled up until that point and was just in need of some better structure in my schooling. I didn't want to go to a traditional large high school and RUHS fit my needs perfectly. They have a middle-college-level style teaching that is diverse in its environment. I'm able to get the, get the instruction and structure that I needed while also maintaining some of the similarities I had while being homeschooled. Being a middle-college-level style, RUHS's mission is to prepare its students for college. RUHS also has a great partnership with Blackhawk Technical College. During last semester, we had thirty students enrolled in a hundred and fifteen college credit classes. I'm a part of that. I'm currently enrolled in the Criminal Justice Program at Blackhawk Technical College. I'm in my second semester and I have learned that I really want to pursue law enforcement as a career because of those classes. I'm on track to graduate not only with my high school diploma, but also with an associate's degree from Blackhawk Tech. Last week, there was a professional development for the charter schools called One Size Doesn't Fit All Event. Ms. Kerr, the dean of students at Rocky University, invited me and some other students to come along and answer any questions regarding RUHS. During the event in between the sessions, I jokingly remarked to Ms. Kerr that I think I could present the slides better than she could. And she called me up on my bluff and handed me the clicker and said, okay, you do it. And I did, and I had some help from my other classmates. We were able to give the presentation. Um, I think pretty accurately to what she had set out. Uh, one thing that I think that's really awesome that Ms. Kerr does each week is she sets out this rock star award. Um, she shouts out a student or a staff member on their accomplishments that they had during that week. I think for me personally that it's really helpful to have an understanding of what these students or the staff member did. Um, sometimes even in a school with only seventy-four students, people get lost. Um, and it really brings appreciation and shows the collaboration that our school promotes. Um, collaboration is a massive part of RUHS. I'm a T, I'm in a TC sociology class, composed of students from every grade level, from ninth through twelfth. In this class, we have discussions where I would get great insight and a wide perspective from both the freshmen and the seniors. Um, we also recently had a game night, which brought the student and the staff together. Um, and we played a lot of really fun games and made some fun of our teachers, which was good, good time. I am so glad that I chose to attend RUHS. It's been a great change for my life and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you very much. Oh, wow, awesome, thank you very much. Okay. All right, moving on, um, we have citizen comments. We have nine, uh, folks tonight. And, um, I'm going to go ahead and read our, um, statement that we have been reading before. Citizen comments for the last, um, for a few months now, okay? Uh, welcome to all of those who have signed up to speak to the board tonight. We value your input and interest in our school community. Accordingly, through Board Policy PO one zero one six seven point three titled Public Comment at School Board Meetings, the board allows citizens an opportunity to express interest and concerns for the schools during the citizen comments portion of school board meetings. We'd also like to remind you that school board meetings are for the purpose of carrying out the business of the district. They are not public meetings, but official business meetings held in public. To ensure that board meetings are conducted in an orderly and productive manner, all public comments, no matter the topic, are subject to the following regulations. First is time limit. Speakers will be given one three-minute opportunity to address the board. This time limit will be enforced. If a speaker continues past the expiration time, the school board president or district official will ask the speaker to stop and leave the podium. Per, uh, Board Policy PO zero one six seven point three adopted March ninth, twenty twenty-one, the portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited to speak shall be limited to thirty minutes unless extended by the presiding officer. Number two, conduct. Speakers must conduct themselves with respect and civility toward others. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. No person may address or question board members individually. Prohibited conduct includes conduct which is disruptive to the meeting, interferes with the ability of others to observe the meeting or speak to the board, or interferes with the ability of the board to conduct business. This includes conduct which is abusive, harassing, or threatening, and conduct which includes the use of vulgarities or profanities. If a speaker violates this rule, we may prohibit the speaker from further comment at the meeting. Number three, topics for discussion. Speakers may not comment on confidential personnel disputes, share grievances involving school, individual school employees that do not implicate issues of public concern, or share individual student disciplinary matters, as there are other channels available that provide for consideration disposition, disposition, excuse me, of such matters. Number four, board response. Pursuant to Wisconsin's Open Meeting Law, board members are prohibited from responding to public comments unless the topic was identified on the public posting of the board agenda. And number five, recess adjourn. In the event an individual's conduct causes this disruption to the board meeting and the board cannot continue its business, the gavel may be used to declare a recess or to adjourn the meeting. In addition, if such conduct constitutes a threat to the health or safety of another individual at the meeting, law enforcement may be contacted to restore order and safety. All right, thank you. Let me see here. There's just too much stuff here. All right, uh, first we have Heather Miller. Ms. Miller, would you, um, state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, ma'am. Heather Miller, twenty twenty-three Joliet Street.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like to take you on a little journey just for a moment. Um, I want you to envision you are a seven, eight, maybe nine-year-old going to school here in Janesville. Specifically, maybe Van Buren. Um, the moment you get out of the vehicle, or maybe you walk to school, you are instructed to put on your mask the moment you touch school property. As you walk to your space on the playground to where you line up with your class, you are told to stand on a dot. You may not play, you may not fraternize with the other children, you may not speak to your friends. You stand on the dot and you wait for further instructions. The dots are three feet apart. So the bell rings and you march inside to your lockers where you discard your outer clothing and your backpacks, but maintain your masking. You go to your classroom where you have a breakfast meal provided. And you may remove your mask to take a bite. And then quickly put your mask back on until you are ready for your next bite. This is what continues throughout the school day. And I don't remember ever sending my children to military school. But this is what it's created. And we have no recognition of emotions because we don't see faces. We have no recognition of anything other than frustration and disregard for authority. We have damage being done to our schools. We have principals that have given their heart and soul that are retiring and resigning because they've just had enough. I'd like to share with you a, a picture, a piece of art that was done by an eighth-grade student, um, by the name of Ilana. She's not in our district, but I think this is a very powerful picture. When you look at a picture that is being done by a student who is twelve, thirteen years old, this is a very powerful position because she feels like she is not just masked, she is muzzled, she is silenced, and she is sad, and at some point, there's no going back.
Ms. Miller, uh, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next I have Matthew Herman. Hi, Mister Herman, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Absolutely. Matthew Herman, four three four four Edgewood Court. Um, I'm here to further discuss mask mandate, things like that. It is my understanding that.
Ms. Jensen, the time? So, I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I'm so sorry. Okay, we're ready. Sorry.
I, I, um, we were under the understanding that, uh, Superintendent Poofall had, uh, sent everybody on the board a recommendation of it to become mask optional, which is what a group of parents have been asking for, for the last several months. Um, I know that wearing these masks have been very harmful to my daughter's anxiety and, uh, her mental health over the last two years. And I currently know that for a fact in Rock County, there are only two, two school districts that have a mandate forcing masks anymore. One of them's ours, the other is Beloit. So I would hope that we can join the rest of Rock County in becoming, um, mask optional. Let parents take control of their children's health and give us back the freedoms that we should have in this country and instead of letting them get out of control. So I would strongly hope that you all consider his recommendation because number one, that is what a school board hired him to be as the leader of our school district. So with that said, he has served us very well over the years, okay? He does a lot of research, he does a lot of work with that, so I would think that, uh, recommendation coming from him should be strongly considered. Not only the, all the parents', um, messages to the board over the last several months. The second thing I want to talk about is we also know the superintendent has, um, given notice of his resignation come April. This is an election year for several of the board members. And I know a lot of us parents would feel that it would be highly inappropriate if another superintendent was hired by the outgoing board versus the incoming board. So I guess what I'm asking for as a parent is that any kind of hiring be held off until after, after the April fifth election so that the incoming board is who is hiring our next superintendent that will be serving our, our schools for the next several years. And if you, any of you have any more questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, next I, I think it's, is it Kaia Herman? I hope I pronounced that right. Is it Kaia? Did I pronounce your name right? All right, great. Ms. Herman, would you give your name and, um, address, please?
Kaia Herman, four three four four Edgewood Court. Hello, my name is Kaia Herman and I'm an eighth grader at Marshall Middle School. When COVID started and the schools shut down, I was halfway in sixth grade. At that time, my mental health was fine, but my grades were not the best because I could not learn properly. We did not go back till the beginning of seventh grade, then only three months in did it close again till mid-January. Through that time and into March, I fell into a horrible depression. I felt isolated, useless, unworthy, and just empty. It was easy. It was so easy to hide because we were online and nobody saw or heard me. Not only was I failing classes, I was also suicidal. And I saw no reason to be here anymore. I know my friends and family loved me. By that time, I was in so much pain, I did not care. It came to the point where I would hold multiple pills in my hand and just think about swallowing them and stop being in pain. Luckily, it never came to that, but when we, we went back to school and wore masks, I was still depressed and it was easy to hide. I mean, no one saw my face. How could they? When every time I pulled it down, a teacher would say, keep your mask up. To me, that felt like someone telling me to hide my feelings and not share. Around April or May, I luckily fell out of my depression thanks to my mother helping me and seeking help out for me. Starting eighth grade, I found out we were still in masks and teachers would still say the same things only more often. I have heard and been told, keep your mask up above your nose, or I need to be safe to visit my mother, so pull your masks up. And pull your mask up all the way and then I will help you. Those comments are just the few I've heard and been told. We have been in masks for two years. It has been proven it does not help and it's easy for children and teens to hide their feelings under the masks. So I ask that you consider what we children, the future generation, has been through and maybe still are going through. There are many children that could be suicidal right now like I was and need help, but are covered by the masks. And as long as the masks are mandatory, this will continue to happen. That is why I ask that masks be optional. Let the children make the choices for their children, not you. I would also like to say I'm a hundred times better in mental health and in school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, next I have, um, Colton Measner. Did I do that? I got it right this time.
Uh, my name is Colton Measner. My address is, uh, twenty-two thirty-four Arthur Aaron Drive. Um, hello, all board members. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. To start off, I'd like to thank Superintendent Poofall for putting the masks back on the agenda and sending that letter out of recommendation to make it mask optional. I am a junior at Craig High School. I want to start off by saying a good number of peers and I would want to have a normal senior year. We can't have that with masks on our face. We can't call this our new normal. I believe everyone has a say and has rights in this country, and I believe that's part of the American way. I think it's a good idea to point out that COVID cases must be pretty low considering no school and the school district of Janesville has been shut down or quarantined. I want this hypocrisy to come to an end so we don't have all this tension we have now. In times like these, we need to, need to be together and not against each other. I want to see my friends and teachers' faces again. When you look at the district page prior to COVID nineteen, you see all these smiling faces of students and staff. We need that back. Teachers and administrators shouldn't spend more time reprimanding you about your masks and dealing with kids that are quite frankly out of control and just cause problems. I still find it crazy how you have to wear a mask for school all day, but as soon as you start to participate in sports after school, you can take it off. As everyone here has seen, there's a staggering number of districts going mask optional because we are making a turn, turn towards normal again. So let's make a turn in the right direction and make it optional here. I have two quotes from my peers at Craig High School. I believe if the teachers and administrators in the school district of Janesville truly believe in supporting our own rights, then why do they force us to wear a mask that is against our rights? I can't count on my fingers how many times I've seen teachers or administrators with their masks not on correctly, and there are no repercussions for that, but they're supposedly our role models. Another student said, I completely agree, Colton. I don't want to get into trouble, so all I'm going to say is we need more people like this to stand up for people because they are too scared they will get into trouble for standing up for what is wrong. In America, that should not happen. I was brought up as I do as I say, not as I do mentality. And I thank you for your time tonight and please make the decision that is in the best interest of the students and staff of this district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next I have, um, Sarah Cornwith. Ms. Cornwith, would you state your name and your address, please?
I'm Sarah Cornwith. I reside at four hundred Calhoun Avenue. Um, I'm gonna talk about the mask mandate. Um, when my son started school back in P. Four Day in Janesville, I felt the school district and staff always had kept their interests at heart. Even though all through elementary school, I never challenged their curriculum, rules, or policies that were set in place. Now they're both attending Franklin Middle School, I've been forced to wear masks, and now I have a different opinion. My sons have expressed to me the teachers have threatened them by saying they'll, they'll call me at home due to wearing, not wearing their mask properly. In all the years that my sons have attended school, I have never received any disciplinary phone calls concerning either one of them. They have also told me about instances where teachers have encouraged students to bully them about wearing their masks correctly. But the instance that infuriated me the most was when my younger son told me his teacher said to him, if you don't wear your mask correctly and you get me sick, I can infect my father and it could kill him. My son, who loves everyone and would never hurt a fly, was devastated that his teacher would think he would intentionally hurt someone. That, in my opinion, is the sickest form of manipulation. That, in my opinion, is the sickest form of manipulation. The last I knew, the school district of Janesville had an anti-bullying policy, or is that only if you go along with things like mask mandates? As a mother, it is my decision to, it isn't, sorry. As a mother, it's me who makes the decisions concerning my children's health and well-being. It is in my opinion that masks are not benefiting my children's health or well-being. Masks should be optional. Students and staff, no matter what grade level or school, should have a choice. School districts like Milton and Edgerton have voted their students and staff a choice of wearing a mask. It's time for Janesville to care enough about their students and staff and do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Claire Dish. Dish? I'm sorry. Claire Dish.
Hi, I'm Claire Dish. I live at 1717 Doubletree Drive, and I'm here to discuss the mask optional recommendation as well. First, I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Poofall and for getting this back on the agenda and having it become a discussion that we can address again. I have three children. I have an eighth grader at Edison Middle School. She struggles with the masks. I have a first grader at Kennedy Elementary School, and he is afraid of not wearing a mask because it has been so ingrained in him that he will get sick or get someone else sick. That, for me as a parent, is really scary to see that fear in him. He doesn't wear a mask anywhere he goes, not to the grocery store, not to church, not to a restaurant. But for whatever reason, his fear is locked in that if he doesn't wear a mask at school, he's a danger. And he's not a danger. He's six, and he's in first grade, and he's cute. We just went swimming with one of his teachers the other day, and he didn't have a mask on, and she said, "When did you lose your tooth?" And I said, "Well, he lost that three months ago." She sees him four times a week and never knew, and that breaks my heart. And I broke my heart for him last year as a kindergartner. And I would just, I would really like to see the mask be optional for all grade levels. I feel like it is our choice as parents on how we protect our children and what we protect them from. So I would very much appreciate it if we could get that taken care of tonight so that I can go home and tell my children that they no longer have to cover their faces and that they can see the smiles. When we went mask optional for summer school, I was working in summer school, and, oh my goodness, like in Kennedy, and the smiles were just infectious. Everyone was happy to have those masks off, and we need to get back to that again so that we have a happy, healthy learning environment. And when I say healthy, I mean the mentality healthy. Yeah, that's it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Brenda and Lydia Brotsman. Please, would you please state your names and your addresses, please?
My name is Lydia Brotsman, and I live on 1820 Coyote Drive.
And I'm Brenda Brotsman, and I also live at 1820 Coyote Drive.
I'm a seventh grader at Edison Middle School. This year, I'm homeschooled, though I am still involved with Edison and take some classes there. I choose to be homeschooled because I can't stand wearing a mask for eight hours every day. Last year, when I went to Edison, I found it hard to make friends because we couldn't see each other's faces. Masks make it hard for us to hear our teacher's voice, which prevents us from learning. I, as well as many other students and parents, feel it should be your choice as to whether or not you should wear a mask. Everyone likes to listen to the science of COVID. Well, most of the time for things like this, there's a control group. We didn't have to wear masks during summer school last year. That was like our control group. And even though we weren't wearing masks, COVID cases within the school did not go up. No one died associated to the school, and everyone still had fun. There were a few students that still decided to wear masks, and that's okay. They didn't get made fun of or left out because it should be your choice. America's a free country. Everyone here should have freedom, so please give me some.
And I would just like to add that I went to school to be a teacher. I have an education degree, and I fully planned to teach in the public school district. And I had friends who homeschooled, and I had friends who were homeschooled who tried to tell me that it was great, and I was like, "No, no, no. I don't want my kids to be weird homeschool kids. I want them to, you know, have fun and do the normal things in school and public schools." And as Heather said, no, it's completely reversed, and because of the past year, because of the masks, I love homeschooling. I plan to continue homeschooling, and I'm encouraging all of my friends to homeschool, which kind of breaks my heart because I used to feel that way about public school. But they can't do anything normal in public schools anyways, so, including seeing their friends, talking to their friends, seeing their faces. They've been having a lot more fun with homeschool co-ops and youth groups in church, so. So thanks for helping me love homeschool.
Ashley Damro. Ashley? Is Ashley here? Okay. Hi, would you state your name and your address, please?
Yes, Ashley Damro, 1350 Mayfair Drive, apartment 13. I would just like to say I think all of our grade levels should be mask optional. Thank you.
Okay, last one. Is it David LaCaptain? Hi, David, would you state your name and address, please?
Yes, David LaCaptain, 1350 Mayfair Drive. I wanted to say that I think masks should be optional. I think we've all heard and seen the damage that they can do, both physically and mentally, on kids, and I think it's time we recognize that and make a change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's it for citizen comments tonight. Now moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, it was Commissioner Murray and Commissioner Millard. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? All opposed? Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, yes.
Yes, that's right. I'm sorry. Roll call vote. Apologize, go ahead.
Okay. Hannah Wall.
Yes.
Hayworth.
Yes.
Herda.
Yes.
Millard.
Yes.
Murray.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Dahmershausen.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Okay, and Commissioner Ardray is not with us yet tonight, and Commissioner Hayworth is on the phone. All right, thank you very much. So we are going to move to 3.3, consider approval of discontinuing the use of the November mask metric and making masks recommendate, recommended.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to address you again this evening about safety protocols and specifically masking as part of the layered protections that the district has been using on and off, although mostly on, right, over the course of the last year and a half. As time has passed, right, we continue to learn about, you know, what's safe and what's not, and what matters, and what moves the needle, and what doesn't. And one of the things you've heard me talk about all along is that I'm a little bit ambivalent about the great mask debate, but I've always been really passionate about kids needing to be in school. And so a lot of the past recommendations from me were really wrapped up in that need to keep kids in school and attending school. And as long as the quarantine guidelines were going to be what they historically were until about a month ago, which was you're out for 10 days, and if you're within, well, it used to be six feet, and then it was three feet, and if you're not masked, you're not vaccinated, you're getting quarantined, right? And what all of that resulted in, if you weren't wearing a mask, was a lot of kids getting sent home on quarantine, sometimes repeatedly. And the disruption that went along to the learning environment for those kiddos while that happened. Well, fast forward to January of 2022, and the health departments, I'll just say that plural, meaning CDC, state, and Rock County, all in concert with one another revised their quarantine procedures, going from 10 days to five days, and really changing the eligibility requirements to get quarantined. In other words, requiring a lot fewer people to be quarantined and narrowing that down significantly. So we've been following those new quarantine guidelines now for the last, I think, three or four weeks. Those have all been working really quite nicely. And along with that, during the last month or so, COVID numbers, you know, we know there's peaks and valleys to this, right? And right now, those numbers are really going down, and they're getting to be not quite as low as they were last summer, but they're starting to get close to being as low as they were last summer, when we, as one of our guest commentators here just talked about, you know, were without masks and without a problem when we did so. In addition to that, the other thing that's changed from last summer fall to now is that all five to 18-year-olds are now eligible to be vaccinated and have had ample time to get vaccinated, if in fact that's what their parents and they choose, right? And so I don't judge that one way or the other. But last fall, the younger kids weren't even eligible yet. The middle-aged kids had kind of just become eligible and really hadn't had time to get through the series, if that's what they in fact wanted to do. The high school kids were the only ones really that had that opportunity. Fast forward again to February of '22, and really, other than a few of our four-year-old kindergarten kids, all of our age, all of our school-age kids have had ample time to make that choice, if in fact that's what their parents want to do for them. So as a result of all of those things, my recommendation is to go ahead and discontinue the use of the mask metric that was approved last October, and to transition from mandatory masking, which is where we're currently at as it applies to the metric, to a mask recommended, not required, recommended status. There are a couple of exceptions. One is that mask mandate, masking continues to be mandated by the federal government if you're on a plane, train, or bus, and so we need to continue to follow. That's a mandate from the federal government, and when that expires, you know, then we would be able to stop wearing them on buses, but in the meantime, we have to wear them on buses. And then the other thing is, is that if somebody gets COVID and is diagnosed with a positive case of COVID, and they are able to come back to school or work, because it could be an employee or a child, after the five-day quarantine, they would need to wear a mask for days six through 10, because there's some pretty sound science that says that there's still some likelihood that they could spread the disease, particularly on days six, seven, and eight. So those would be the two exceptions at the moment. Other than that, we would let it be the choice of kids and parents. So that is my recommendation. Do you have any questions for me?
I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Murray in a second. It's by Commissioner Hayworth. Okay, Commissioner Murray?
Would this go into effect immediately after approval?
It would go into effect, the recommendation I had is it would go into effect tomorrow, Wednesday the 23rd. We have to, Mr. Gasper actually has a communication, you know, ready to send out if the board in fact decides to make a decision to go optional.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Paul.
I'm in support of this. I just want to say this. One of the questions I had from a number of people was the transition time. I received some communication from a number of staff members saying they weren't necessarily against it, but that if they hadn't happened to look at board docs, they would not have known that this was going into effect. And so I'm a little worried about the families that this is going to be a big surprise to, and then also the staff members that aren't necessarily prepared. And I know there's a number of us that are like, "Well, we all saw this coming," but let's be honest, not everyone is like watching the board meetings all the time, so.
Are you kidding?
I just put it out there, so.
I think it makes for riveting TV.
And I know that, I know that people want this like immediately. I am aware Milton put in like a 4:00 PM the following day. I think that would be like a middle ground to recommend, so.
Ultimately, that's the decision of the board or the place of the board. We do have communications ready to go out if in fact the board decides to enact this for tomorrow morning.
So if, so if you are, are you making an amendment to the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment for this to go into place at 4:00 PM tomorrow.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so that was Commissioner Paul and Commissioner Dahmershausen. Okay, so, what's that? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Wall, okay. I heard it from that general direction.
That was this job.
I got it. Okay. Okay, so now we're going to discuss first the amendment. So anybody, did you want, did you want to add, or do you want to leave it open for discussion right now?
I don't, I did have it on, sorry. It's just, I just know that there was that concern, and I think I've shared that, but I know that people are angry. I can hear that they're mad that it's not going possibly into place immediately, but there's a lot of feelings about this, and I just, you know, I think we could be sensitive and have a clear path board for our administrators, for our teachers, staff, and families that may not be prepared.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dahmershausen?
I have a couple of questions. What's the, number one, health department? What is their point at this point? Where's their stance at this point? We were going along their guidelines.
The Rock County Public Health Department still recommends the wearing of masks in a school environment, and that's basically the language they use is recommend.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. And I recognize also there's a tremendous group of people on both sides of the aisle. I don't get emails from people that want to keep them, parents, teachers, or others. I get told in person. But obviously, we have an overwhelming group of people that I can't, I'm afraid to open my computer and that, and I want to do this right, because a lot of things can happen. And the one thing we've had is success. By wearing masks and being careful, we don't have many cases or anything. It's helped. I'm going to very reluctantly agree to go ahead, but I want to watch the metrics if they grow or not. The other thing is, I wish we could had, I didn't want to do it just till tomorrow. I wanted to give it a couple of days for the thing, but I don't want to pile another.
Folks, folks, this is a business meeting, please. Thank you.
I don't want to pile a bunch of amendments on amendments, but I would like to suggest that maybe they'd be willing to take a look at adding another day or two to it somehow till 4:00 PM the following, an extra day there, just to allow people to all be aware of what's happening, and if somebody doesn't go to school and they didn't know that, no secret that not everyone gets a gazette, not everyone watches board meetings, and not everyone looks at their emails. So I'm, you know, or at least every day. I mean, they're like many of us. So I would just suggest another day. I wish we weren't doing it quite yet till the health department came along. I'll be very sincere with it, but if the majority of people want that, I'll go along with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay?
Meyer.
Oh, yes.
So just so the board is informed and the public is informed, if this does go into effect tomorrow, we do have directive for staff and building administration regarding who needs to wear a mask. As Superintendent Poofall recommended, it would be for those that have been positive and they want to come back on their sixth day. It directly is going to state that concerns of staff or students not following through with this expectation should be directed to the building principal or their direct supervisor. The principal and direct supervisor will consult benefits and wellness for staff and the director of pupil services for students if the compliance of mask use cannot be followed for next steps, which can include being sent home until day 11, in which the person could return to school with no mask. Obviously, anyone who's tested positive for COVID-19 and is cleared to return to school after day five would have to wear the face mask. Staff members in that category would be reminded of the expectation through benefits and wellness, and positive students will be reminded of this expectation through the school nurse.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Murray?
I won't be voting in support of the amendment, although I do understand, but it won't take long. You know, as soon as somebody walks in that door, and I mean, the word will be out pretty quick. will be out pretty quickly. And I do understand your concern for the staff's understanding, so, thanks.
Commissioner?
I also won't be supporting that because I think that many are aware of this and they are adaptable to anything, like we didn't have school today, so it's very, we could do that on last second notice. So I think that, and it's still mask optional, so even if they wear masks tomorrow, that's fine. It's not against anything, but many communications will go out. Many people will call each other, the kids are watching this, the kid, you know, parents are watching this. I think plenty of notices given out if they want to even do this, they could also still send their kids a mask tomorrow.
Thank you. So I actually have been through this because, because in Illinois, on a Friday, there was a TRO, you know, that was filed and upheld, and it affected my school district. And so on the, so on Friday, I mean, we did have the weekend, but it was still, you know, pretty quick, right? And so we walked in on Monday with mask optional. And it was really, it was, I appreciate what you're saying, Commissioner Paul, because it was really kind of stressful, because again, you have been, in addition to dealing with, you know, late work and progress and tardies and absences and phones and, you know, dress code and everything else, it was, it was, you know, more stuff, basically. But I have to tell you that, other than the initial concern, it wore off pretty quickly. And it, and honestly, we've been doing this for two weeks now, and almost the entire staff is still wearing masks and about, actually over fifty percent, at least in my, and this is observation, I have not done a tally, but as I'm looking down the hallway and in my own classes, over fifty percent are still wearing masks. You know, because that's, you know, they're, I'm sure that that's a discussion that they had in their families, and they've had two weeks, right, to work it out. So, you know, so I appreciate your concern, and, you know, I, I guess, and I, and I'm probably going to vote for it just because I appreciate the concern. I don't know that it's absolutely necessary, you know what I mean? So I just want to sort of say that, okay? Thank you. Anything else? All right, then let's vote on the amendment. Would you read the amendment back to us, please?
Sure. The amendment to the original motion was to change it to go into effect at four PM on Wednesday, February twenty-third.
Okay, thank you. We're going to do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Hayworth?
No.
Herda?
Yes.
Mallard?
No.
Murray?
No.
Paul?
Yes.
Dahmershausen?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Yes.
That vote passes five to three.
Okay, so we'll go into effect after four o'clock. All right.
Well, no, the.
Okay, so now we vote on the original amendment. Any conversation about the original amendment? Commissioner Hanawal?
Yeah, I'd just like to say I'm going to support the mask optional thing. However, I think I want to echo Mr. Dahmershausen's sentiments in terms of the emails. For me, when I read emails, if they're nasty, sarcastic, it gives me cause not to finish reading them just all the way. And I know this has been a heated issue over the last few years, but I think, and not just with masking, but with other issues, I think the old adage, you get, you catch a lot more flies with honey than you do with vinegar, works out, and if you want my attention on an issue, I appreciate a little civility. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Murray?
I'd like to make a motion to amend that we approve this change immediately.
Second.
So the motion to, so this, so this is basically just going over the same motion we just did?
Well, it's, I'm changing them to removing a mask immediately instead of tomorrow.
Oh, instead of tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Oh, okay. Well, we have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion from the board? Oh, yeah, Michael, did you?
I don't have anything to say, but you give me the microphone and ask you a question.
Okay.
Doing just fine.
If you have a question, I would say that the, I believe the motion is proper.
Okay.
The motion was for.
Immediate.
Tomorrow. The second amendment was for.
The original motion was?
We're at three different times here, so I think it's proper. Now, if you're going back to a priorization.
Got it, thank you. Okay, so I think I'm just going to go ahead and call the question on that, okay? Roll call vote again.
Is everyone clear what the motion is?
Would you read it to us one more time, please?
I will try. The motion on the floor is to amend the amended motion, and the mask optional will now go into effect if this is passed immediately.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure. Hayworth?
Yes.
Herda?
No.
Mallard?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Paul?
No.
Dahmershausen?
No.
Hanawal?
No.
Myers?
No.
That motion fails three to five.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just today, by having you at this point. What if I said seven forty-five?
All right, all right, thank you very much. Okay, so any further discussion on, on the revised proposal, the motion, the amended motion? Sorry. Okay, all right, well then, I'm, I'd like to call the question, okay? And another roll call vote, would you, do we need to have it read again?
Yes, please.
Okay, would you read it to us again, please? Thank you.
The motion on the floor is to discontinue mask metric from October twenty-one and make masks recommended for all staff and students with two exceptions, students who are riding on buses, and to, I don't have it written down here, but.
Anyone who tested positive.
Thank you.
Has returned to clear, or returned to school, is cleared to return to school after five days of quarantine would be.
Must, must wear a mask for days six through ten.
Okay.
The effective date is Wednesday, February twenty-third at four PM. Is that clear? Sorry about the puddling around.
Thank you.
Dahmershausen?
Yes.
Hanawal?
Yes.
Hayworth?
Yes.
Herda?
Yes.
Mallard?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
That passes eight nothing.
Thank you very much, and Commissioner Arrie is not with us yet tonight. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right.
Okay, so we're going to go back to three point one.
Okay, going back to three point one, we have a presentation on Seesaw.
On iPads.
An iPad, oh, yes, an iPad, thank you.
Our district promises focus on providing engaged and empowered instruction for our students, and we've continued, as you know, to adopt new curriculum resources that provide students with engaging learning opportunities. And as we look at our technology, we want to select and provide another tool that continues to engage and enhance our instruction as we develop those digital literacy skills for our students, as they become future ready in their post-secondary skills. At previous board meetings, we have shared, beginning in two thousand nineteen, some of our district vision as we're moving forward with new technology. In February of two thousand nineteen, Dr. Smiley presented our five-year IT infrastructure and device deployment plan. In February of two thousand twenty, I was able to present the digital learning plan to serve as our guide for teaching and learning and as it is enhanced by technology. In the fall of two thousand twenty, we deployed four thousand seven hundred and eleven iPads to our staff and students. And so tonight, with a deployment of almost five thousand iPads, we have Shelley Gard again, our instructional technology program support staff, who work with our K-12 innovation specialists in our buildings to support the implementation of our technology tools connected to our instruction. And you remember Shelley as she presented our Chromebooks as we deployed Chromebooks in secondary, so I want to welcome Shelley back tonight, and she is going to share with you a little bit about the deployment of our iPads.
Thank you. Last month, I brought devices and we played along on a number of things, and it turned into kind of a lengthy presentation, and so hopefully, it's all right that this evening I did not bring them. Really, what we're going to do is share a lot of the very same, same features, only just more age appropriate for the students of the elementary level. So we actually have iPads deployed to P-four J through fifth grade, and in P-four J, they're a small set, so every P-four J classroom has five plus the teacher one, but we don't have our youngest students in a one-to-one setting that begins in kindergarten. So start with the decision to choose iPads for the youngest students. iPads offer multiple age appropriate features that support the developmental stages of our youngest learners. They don't need keyboards, many of them, of course, until they're hit that literacy level, don't recognize the the letters anyway. They don't have the dexterity with their fingers to type even when they do. Mobility is critical, particularly in the elementary classrooms where they're so very active and they're working in centers and then shifting to whole group activity and then into individual, so the iPads prove to be very helpful in that mobility. And then the other thing that we have in all of the elementary classrooms is there's an Apple TV in place, and that's simply a box that allows us to screencast, and students and staff alike can very easily share their, their modeling or an example, or even show what they've created by swapping out that screen mirroring. So it really does work quite well for our youngest learners. I asked a number of teachers how they find iPads, just like I did with the Chromebooks, how they find iPads to be impacting their, their teaching and learning, and I had, not ironically, the exact same types of responses. And so one of the really strong features that Erin Augustine focused on, and she's a third grade teacher over at Van Buren, is she went straight to talking about the accessibility features. We talked last month about Snap and Read. Snap and Read works on iPads as well. Students can select a set of text, they can have it read to them, they can modify the reading level, and they can even have it translated into another language if they wish. Erin noted that some of her kids use Snap and Read every single day. She said her students enjoy that little added independence, but still get the reading support when they need it. So I think that's very helpful. We looked at the potential of cameras with the Chromebooks. I can assure you, the very same potential is there with the cameras on the iPads, and with the click of a button, every elementary student can capture images, record their screen and their voice to demonstrate their learning. We explored QR codes last month, and we understand that QR codes are simply a graphic that can lead with the camera to a URL, which sometimes would be quite lengthy to type. And so of course, in elementary classrooms, the use of cameras and QR codes help our students very quickly navigate to the resources that the teachers have selected. Guided access is actually a feature that is unique to the iPad, and with guided access, the teacher may choose to set the iPad so that the students can't move accidentally or intentionally into any other apps. And so sometimes that just helps students stay focused. I'm going to say that's not something that's used universally, but when students need a little bit more help maintaining their focus, a teacher would turn on guided access. Sometimes I think I should turn that one on for myself, to be honest with you. Of course, the iPads offer touchscreen capabilities, and that's very helpful for our students who wouldn't necessarily have the dexterity to work with a mouse and/or again, a keyboard like I mentioned earlier. I will say that we do have keyboards available to the upper grade level students, and they simply connect them with the dongle so that if they need to practice keying, they may, or anytime that's an appropriate tool, they can add it, but it's not on the device always. And then, of course, Erin mentioned the importance of being able to use speech to text with the built-in keyboard microphone. So she says that's helped all of our students do anything from take their ideas from their head to the device, and she also pointed out that sometimes students just use that, whether it's for dictation or even to help with the spelling of a word. And I can attest to that. My husband will often say, well, how do you spell? And he'll name a word, and I model for him, I pick up my phone, and I dictate it, and I show him. So that is definitely a feature that we can use to help us with our own spelling, and so they've caught on to that very quickly at the elementary level. As far as examples that are from the classroom, this particular example is from Elise Schatz. She is a first grade teacher, and she shared an example of an integrated English Language Arts with Science lesson, and she demonstrates how the iPads enhance learning in her classroom with a combination of a number of digital and manual tools. And so in this particular lesson, Elise is asking the students to choose one of the three animals to research. So she's actually using the browser, and she's pre-selected different resources to help students study the life cycle of the frog, the butterfly, or the chicken, so they have some choice in that. She encourages them to take notes in their journal, their, their, their English Language Arts journal, to kind of structure their thinking, and then ultimately, after they've taken those notes and are ready to, to prepare and show what they know, she gives them, in this case, the option of using Book Creator. If you've never seen Book Creator, we have it for all K-12 students. It is a way that users can add their ideas, images, text, sound, to create an ebook that they literally can publish for either their smaller population or even to a lighter, wider audience. The students could also choose Seesaw, and Seesaw is basically the classroom dashboard, and you'll see other teachers use that as well. At the secondary level, we use Google Classroom, and Google Classroom is where teachers can share out a lesson, share out demonstrations, et cetera. Students can respond right there and/or receive those lessons and submit them in a different fashion. The same is true for Seesaw, it's just more, excuse me, it's much more age appropriate for elementary students. And then, of course, Elise offers the students the opportunity to simply go manual, which is totally fine and sometimes preferred, and that would be by using some crayons and some paper. This lesson is actually from Sarah Perry's fourth grade math class and, oops, excuse me. This is fourth grade math, and Sarah is actually not only sharing what she does with the digital tool, but also how she's incorporating the instructional strategy of gradual release. So the instructional strategy of gradually release is a highly researched and very strong instructional practice, and with gradual release, the teacher first models a strategy. So that's the I-do portion. Then the teacher offers the students the tools to do it in either a large or whole class group, so we do it together, okay? And then third, the students have a U-do, that's their independent practice, and then when the students are ready, either they're ready to continue and go further, or they need some additional help, they can move into the May-do. So in this particular example, Sarah's students are using an app called Number Pieces, and so she's modeling with that, then they do the whole group activity, and you can see in step three, she pointed out that sometimes students go straight to the workbook. They don't need the extra manipulatives, they're ready to go. Other. Other times, students may use those digital manipulatives to prove their thinking. And so they have that option if they wish. And then certainly, they may do the extended activity. One of the things that Tanya Wojc... Wojc... Oh, it's, sorry, Tanya, pointed out with all of the digital tools, especially during the COVID time, is that we did not have the capacity to send all of these things home with kids. But the program that we use for our math curriculum has a wealth of different apps that they can use to do that manipulation digitally. Amanda Mori is an art teacher over at Van Buren. And she demonstrates beautifully the use of Seesaw. She's actually one of our Seesaw ambassadors. I mentioned already that that's kind of the class dashboard that teachers can use in K-5. So what Amanda does is she pre-records her lesson so that she's demonstrating in kind of her own little studio how students will go about whatever art technique they're going to apply. If you can see in number 2, the photo's not super large, but that young lady has an iPad and a headset on. And she's actually watching Amanda's lesson while she's carrying out those same strategies with the piece of art in front of her. Then the students use the iPad to take pictures and to publish their work to Seesaw, where it's easily accessible for Amanda to grade. And she said quite often, the students will reflect, or she'll ask them to. So whether they hit the microphone and talk about what they did or do a quick recording, or even write a reflection on what they learned or what they might do differently with their art next time. Amanda mentioned that she used to, in order to grade for art, take piles of things home and sit in this huge semicircle, grading all of these pieces. And now she can take her iPad home, click on the thumbnails and be able to not only observe what the students completed, but also their thoughts on it and to share feedback with them. She mentioned that if she ever had to go back to the other way, she's not sure she could do it. Here's just another example of Amanda's demonstration. And we do this quite often in a lot of places. It's commonly known as app-smashing. And essentially, what we do is we layer apps. And so we might use a stop-motion app. We might use a special image creating app. And in this case, what we have here is that students use stop-motion to create a landscape and then also add a second piece that's moving. Now, I've seen some neat applications with this in ELA classrooms or in library lessons where the students create a piece of a setting of a book. And then they have the character and they have the character move through stop motion. So lots of great options there. While our catalog of apps might look like a lot of fun and games, I want to assure you that we work very hard to select the best apps that offer the greatest opportunities to engage students while also enhancing teaching and learning. During the app-vetting process, we check the apps for a variety of qualifiers, including age-appropriateness, data security and privacy, that's very important, as well as the overall quality and engagement that the app would offer. When we first widely launched student iPads way back in 2018, before we were one-to-one and had the same model for everybody, teams of teachers worked with me to select a foundational catalog of apps. Now it's an ongoing process and teachers work with their innovation specialists to make further recommendations. Once an app is vetted, it's as easy as dropping it. I shouldn't say as easy. I don't have to do it, but our app, our app IT does. They put it in a catalog. And then it's on every single iPad. And the students can go ahead and just download it themselves, not unlike how we would use our smartphones and go to the App Store. The nice thing about it, though, is it's already been pre-selected by staff members. Finally, like all great tools, there's a learning curve for staff members in order to use iPads to enhance learning. We have systems in place that support professional learning. The primary three that we have, and the first is actually teachers and lots and lots of paraprofessionals across the district, where they use iPads, they can go straight to the Apple Teacher Portal and earn badges to learn all about the different applications in education with iPads. Once they've earned all their badges, they become iPad-certified. And I'm happy to report that as of this fall, 95% of staff members who use iPads with students have been certified. The great thing about that certification process is it's always there. It's put out by Apple, so we know its quality. And so anytime we're onboarding new people or someone changes grade levels or something, they can get that training and it's anytime learning. They can literally do it whenever they wish. In addition, though, to that Apple certification, of course, we have Frontline. And staff can self-select different iPad sessions that are put together by innovation specialists and others who are leading the charge. And then finally, the Apple Store. Maybe you didn't know this yourselves. And if you didn't, I'd encourage you, if you're an iPad user or an Apple user, the Apple Store actually offers face-to-face and virtual sessions, not only specifically targeting education, which they do, they call it Teacher Tuesdays, but they have other, like getting started with this or that and coding, et cetera. So all different opportunities for people who can and want to learn more. Do you have any questions about the iPads?
Yeah, we used to have an Apple Store in Janesville, out at the mall. It's uptown. There was a store in there for Apple for a short time. It didn't last a long time. And that because they got crushed by AT&amp;T and the others. They just kind of ate them up, so Apple wasn't working that well and there's complaints. But one of the things I'd like to do, because obviously, this isn't free. It costs money. And I'd like to someone somehow to encourage Apple to open a store here again. And not only make it easier for our administration and teachers to learn, but also for parents to share with that as such. Because I think the amount of money we spend there is significant. And I, not against it. I'd just like to see better access than having to go to Hilldale to do some of the things. And I don't know if you can do anything about it, Doctor, but...
One of the things that Apple has done in order to reach all learners is they've moved things into a virtual world. And so, and probably COVID, you know, had a lot to do with that. But now, instead of going there, they'll actually meet you. And it can, it will, it's basically virtually face-to-face. And so without having to travel anywhere, even out of your living room, they have those sessions online. And then the other thing that's not written in here, but you raise a great point, is because of the amount, the volume that we spend with Apple and our partnership with them, we have a very strong Apple team. Allison's worked with me with the Apple Instructional Leadership Group. Dr. Smiley and I have worked together as well with the technology implementation side of it. So we have a very strong core group of Apple professionals who are targeting, how do they make sure that it's working well for us and they're responsive if we have issues or questions? They've brought trainers over to us as well.
Okay, it sounds good. I just, I would like to make sure that it's available and perhaps a little bit, not just to our students and teachers, but to our parents that are interested in that, to sit down and say, "Hey, I want to learn more about it. How do I go about it? How do we show them how to do it?" Sometimes the children can do it. They're kind of, kind of sharp children today.
Well, the other nice thing now is that teachers are modeling so much because they're recording their screen and putting it in Seesaw, so a parent can watch that lesson right alongside of their child.
Interesting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Any other questions or comments? So I'm just always amazed by how much is available and how much is there helping kids. And, you know, you mentioned the, and maybe I missed this, but you mentioned the art example where she's, she's got the headphones on and that kind of thing. So is this a child that's in the classroom with the teacher at the same time?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so the child's not home, working from home?
No, no.
Okay.
What she's doing, though, what the teacher's doing is she's offering, you can call it flipped learning if you will. That was kind of a earlier term for it. Is she's putting the lesson out so that students can watch it at their pace. They can re-watch it, they can pause. They're still in the classroom setting with the teacher, but they can stop and ask for help. Instead of a bunch of students coming and hovering around and trying to watch her demonstrate something and then go back to their seats.
Yeah.
It's readily available. And then when kids have to be learning from home, it's available for them just as well.
Awesome. Thank you very, very much.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else? All right, thank you. Okay, moving on. SRR3 update. Mrs. Carlson and Mr. McCray.
Good evening, Board Commissioners, Superintendent Poffel, colleagues in public. I'm pleased to be here this evening to present to you the initial SRR3 budget plan for the school district of Janesville. The federal elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, SRR3, are being provided under the American Rescue Plan, ARP, to address the impact of the coronavirus pandemic on public school districts. The school district of Janesville is eligible to be reimbursed for up to $16,654,853 in expenses that are tied to budget items that are based on the SRR3 plan submitted to and approved by the Department of Public Instruction. At least 20% of those funds, $3,330,971, must be used toward evidence-based improvement strategies that are federal or state-approved. And they are tied to address learning loss due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The grant period runs from the beginning of the pandemic through September 30th, 2024. And the plan developed and presented here tonight encompasses expenses through the end of the grant period. So through that September 30th, 2024 period. The initial SRR plan is due to the Department of Public Instruction on March 11th, 2022. And once the Department of Public Instruction approves the plan, the approved plan will be posted to the district website. And that's required by the law. And I'd like to have you note that the due to required licensing and more specific details required in the State Wise Grant System, which is what we input the budget information into for that plan. The, the plan as presented here tonight is the more comprehensive plan, but the plan that will be posted to the website, because those pieces may not necessarily be able to be put in right now, are not, it will not exactly match what we're presenting here tonight. So with the grant period running through that September 30th, 2024 timeframe, as more specific details are determined on the district response to the changing needs or priorities, the budget will be updated and posted to the district website accordingly. So each time we make a budget update at the DPI Wise Grant System, we will be uploading that budget into the website. And the plan as presented here tonight uses stakeholder feedback during meetings with district and public entities, as well as the January SRR3 Plan Stakeholder Engagement Survey, which had, as you note there, had over 1,000 responses to that survey. So, and I would just like to personally thank everyone who contributed to both the meetings and the survey for the responses and would like to continue to encourage people to provide feedback as we move through this process. This grant right here outlines the responses from the Stakeholder Engagement Survey, asking the respondents to rank their survey budget categories in order of most important to them, number 1, to least important to them, number 5. The little black marks there add together the first and second, kind of to outline the first and second, people putting first and second priority, how those kind of fall into there. As you can see, addressing learning loss is the highest priority, followed very closely by student services supports and then facilities, operations, and educational technology needs. The complete survey responses will be posted to the district website after we transfer the data to an ADA-compliant format. There were three open-ended questions. There were three open-ended questions. I'll take a breather. Okay. Thank you. So there were three open-ended questions with that. And the way our website works, to make it ADA-compliant, we have to transfer over the data into, and there was both a Spanish survey and an English survey. So we have to transfer that over. I just want to shout out, a special shout out to Angie Burns in our Public Information Department, who is doing the great work. I'm going to talk about it a little later, but she has done a lot of the work with the website that is dealing with this area and is also helping with that ADA-compliant piece and making it look pretty with the data that we've got out there. So a special thank you to Angie Burns for that. We are not developing this budget in a vacuum. The SRR funding touches many areas that tie directly to the annual workings of the district and work in conjunction with our local budget. In some cases, grant-funded items may be able to provide efficiencies for the local budget in the future. Survey responses that may not tie to an SRR3 budgeted item may be incorporated into the local budget, either because they were not specifically a result of the pandemic or because it would result in an expenditure that cannot be supported after the grant period ends. We were very cautious in developing this budget to recommend expenditures that would address the needs due to the pandemic, but not result in a fiscal cliff when grant funding ends. As such, we looked at short-term expenditures, one-time expenditures, or expenditures that may be able to be funded in the future in future continuing grant programs. The Department of Public Instruction identifies focus areas in the SRR3 plan budgeting process. And the plan, as I'll be presenting here, includes three DPI-focused areas. Addressing long-term school closure, preparedness, and response to COVID-19 and indirect cost. Under addressing long-term school closure, we have the following budget areas. For new instructional materials, at this time, we are currently piloting a new elementary English Language Arts curriculum and are looking at supplemental materials to support early elementary reading foundational skills. Evidence-based high-dose tutoring includes partnering with AmeriCorps for an elementary tutoring program, as well as hiring or maintaining additional response to intervention reading and math teachers at the secondary level. And as I referenced previously, the district is required to have at least 20% of the budget tied to evidence-based improvement strategies. We are looking to hire a data analyst to bring together data from various sources to analyze and pinpoint specific district and school needs that can be supported with evidence-based improvement strategies. We are also looking to pay staff for time above and beyond their contract to work together to analyze and develop strategies for individual student and student group needs at their building. This grant encourages community organizations to work together to create wraparound or comprehensive supports as a team. The Integrated Community Sports Budget Line includes funding to work with the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA, as well as looking into piloting a community school model at Wilson Elementary School, which has the highest percentage of free and reduced-price lunch students in the district. In order to be prepared to learn, students need to be in a social and emotional state where they are able to respond to the learning objectives. Current staff need additional student services supports to address the increased needs in this area due to the pandemic. And the pandemic showed our heavy reliance on technology for learning. We want to continue to provide the necessary security, support, and training to make sure that we are utilizing that technology appropriately. to make sure that we are utilizing that technology appropriately. The second focus area, using D P I terminology, is preparedness and response to COVID-nineteen. This budget area includes funding for air quality facility upgrades and social distancing facility upgrades. We are also budgeting to continue to provide personal protective equipment, such as masks at all buildings, and COVID-nineteen-specific custodial supplies and replenishment of sanitizing supplies at all rooms in the district. When you are in a district building, you will notice that each room has a wall-mounted sanitizer dispenser or tabletop hand sanitizer, which is replenished by our dedicated custodial team. Indirect cost is used to offset areas that have increased responsibilities due to the grant, but are difficult to budget that exact increase to the grant directly. An example is the human resources department. As additional staff are added into the grant, this creates additional work for the H R department through the hiring and onboarding process, but would be challenging and time-consuming to identify the exact amount of time for each grant employee. This graphic here shows visually the makeup of the initial budget. Although we are only required to spend twenty percent of the budget on evidence-based improvement strategies, the budget as presented includes thirty-two percent of evidence-based improvement strategies to reflect the needs of our students and staff due to the pandemic. The budget amounts and the facility upgrades under preparedness and response to COVID-nineteen speak to the larger costs associated with construction activities, as well as the older nature of the buildings in our district. There are many resources available for additional information on S R three federal funding. We have created an S R federal funding page on our district website under the community area that addresses all of our current information on these funding sources specific to our district and will continue to be updated as we move through this grant process. The Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction and the United States Department of Education both have homepages specific to S R three that have resources and information as well. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you. I'm kind of surprised only twenty percent is required for the strategies, but it looks like we're doing a lot to close the learning gaps, which is more, I guess, what I was hoping. So that's good. Thank you for this. Can you clarify? Because I'm getting some questions. Is any S R money, two, three, any of the S R levels that we've gotten, able to be used on bonuses or compensation for the staff?
So we have just received additional information on that as of Friday. Originally, there was a clause that said hazard pay was allowed, but you had to be, it had to be identified as a hazardous employee situation to allow hazard pay. They did just provide additional clarification regarding retention bonuses that would be allowable under the S R funding, as long as it was a targeted process for providing tho- those retention bonuses.
Okay, that's not in here. That's not how we're using the money, right?
We are still researching that. Um, we do still have funding that is unbudgeted in S R two. And this budget is an initial plan and can be adjusted, as I said, as we find adjustments in needs.
Okay, yeah, I hope, thank you. Thank you. I like how we're.
Yep.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanawal.
I want to make some comments about the S R funding, but I don't want Tammy to have to stand all during that time. So I'll defer if, to other questions, if you come back to me then.
I don't have heels on. I can stand.
Okay. Um, I was prepared tonight after receiving, uh, um, numerous emails, having some conversations with specific people, J E A, uh, teachers, um, our paraprofessional staff to, uh, put forth a motion tonight. Um, I'm not going to do that, but I think as we look at how we're going to spend this, the S R funding, I think there's some things that we really need to, uh, give some consideration to. We, uh, we're going to receive, and I'm not going to repeat all the numbers exactly, but we're going to receive sixteen point six million dollars in S R three funding, and we have to set aside, obviously, the twenty percent, which leaves a balance of thirteen point three million dollars. That's been outlined in this document as to how it, or, or broken down as to how we might spend that money. Less than ten weeks ago, in a speech by the United States Secretary of Education, Dr. Miguel Cordona stated, these are his words, "Let me be clear. The A R P provides vital resources to hire additional educators and school staff and to improve compensation to recruit educators and school staff. Now more than ever, supporting educator well-being is critical for retaining our current educators and staff. I urge districts, do not waste this chance." Two weeks ago, we sat in this room and we bragged about how, as a board, one of the things that we're most proud of is our dedicated and highly committed staff. There are numerous districts and states throughout the country that are already using S R three or S R funds to give or to compensate their staff. Um, I appreciate the work that went into the stakeholder survey, uh, co- compiling, uh, uh, data from over a thousand people. I've seen the original, or the draft document, it's eighty-two pages long. Seventy-eight pages are individual comments. Out of those individual comments, there are over three hundred comments, requests that part of these funds be used for staff pay, compensation, and retention bonuses. Now, I can appreciate the fact that, um, and this just occurred in the last week, uh, that D P I has come out with, well, you can use S R funds for whatever you want to call them, retention bonuses, et cetera, et cetera. I think we have an opportunity here that's strongly urged by the Secretary of Education to demonstrate in a meaningful way our commitment to our staff. Um, I think we can invest in all kinds of new initiatives, technological updates, facility improvements, improving the quality air. But if we don't take care of the human resource, which is our staff, none of that's not good, none of that's going to matter, because we're not going to have any staff. We're already talking, I think people are using the great, what, I draw a blank for a month, the great resignation movement. Um, the other night, I was watching, uh, a news program about how the teaching profession is no longer a profession that people are, are, are seeking out. Um, in the words of Dr. Cordona, "Let's not waste this chance." Um, I will be bringing forward in the, in the future a motion that we, as a board, need to consider to compensate our staff and use it not only in terms of what we're doing for our, our staff, but also, uh, to use it as a way to quote, uh, potentially recruit new, new staff coming into this district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kevin?
So if the board wanted to make suggestions or make a motion to cha- make changes to this plan, I mean, how is that supposed to work as relates to the timeline here?
Yep. So this is a discussion informational session, but there can be additional changes made to the budget at any time during the budget process. We just have to post it to the D P I website when those budget changes are made. The initial budget is due March eleventh. Um, and so we would need to have something in the initial budget. And in the initial budget, you have to have at least twenty percent of your initial budget has to be budgeted for addressing learning loss. And because a lot of our initiatives for addressing learning loss are tied to staff-specific situations, and until we actually hire staff, we can't put their, it's called a E L O number, which is their license number from the D P I. You have to put their E L O number to show that they are actually appropriately licensed staff for what they're teaching. Until we can do that, we can't put those in the budget. So it's a little bit, that's why I said that the budget as posted to the district website will not be the budget that I'm showing to you tonight, because that has to be that, those specific things can't be put in this early until we actually hire. So my, we, we, we are taking feedback. Stakeholder feedback is throughout the process. You can email me. Um, you can email, we have a s r at Janesville dot K one-two dot W I dot U S email address that you can email your recommendations. Like I said, there are things that may need to have further research to make sure that it is an allowable cost to do that addresses the pandemic. If it's something that, that may not have been already brought up, we are, like I said, researching the piece with the staff, uh, retention bonuses at this time.
I guess, what I, what I'm getting at, there's, there's, is there not a point in time where if the board wants to make a change to this plan, when do we have to do it by? Or do we have all the way until September of twenty twenty-four?
It would be dependent on what initiatives we already put in place at that point and then moving forward with that piece to say, here's what we have not already hired people for or, um, put in an, an agreement with AmeriCorps or put in an agreement with the Y M C A.
So until the money is not committed, until all of the money is not committed, we have time to? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, Superintendent Poof, I saw your, clarifying, okay. Anything else? Commissioner Hanawal, did I see your hand up?
So when you, when you say committed, for instance, uh, i- in, in the proposal, we have an eight million dollar commitment to air quality.
Right. And that, just so you are aware, when I said that construction costs are extremely high, eight million dollars would not even do one H N E C update.
Okay.
So.
My point is, eight million, eight million dollars is a pretty substantial chunk of the, of the change that's left over with the thirteen point three, or actually even less, because you've committed thirty-three percent, I think, to, uh, instead of the twenty, correct?
The thirty-two percent to address the learning loss?
Yeah. So if we commit that eight million, doesn't leave a lot left to do. How, how, would you submit that? Do we have the ability to come back and change that and say, no, we're not going to use eight million for air quality control? We're going to do something different? Or is it, are we locked in at that point?
It would be dependent on where we're at with the contracts for that air quality piece.
So, and you have to submit this by March eleventh, correct? And the recommendations that are in this plan are the ones that will be submitted probably.
As much as possible with the detail required, yes.
Which then gets back to the point which is, then, yes, there's something left, but there's, there's not a lot left that we can use up to the twenty, uh, twenty twenty-four.
Right. That's the plan that is presented right now, but the plan can adjust as we.
So if we wanted to make a change, or we want to see something different, we probably have to do that at the March eighth.
Eleventh?
March eighth meeting. Eighth meeting.
So, so I guess, I guess I kind of had the same question. Does the plan have to be submitted and then we can, um, uh, file agenda items or requests to change certain things? Does the plan have to go to the D P I first? There has to be a plan to change a plan? Or does, do we, do we have to make, if there are going to be adjustments? Um, and I get it that we don't have to, um, that there might be adjustments down the road. But, um, is it, is it better to submit them before it actually goes into? Okay, I'm seeing a no, a shaking a no. Okay. 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 Okay, good. So that, so, so plan submitted, then we can, if there's things that need to be adjusted, then we can talk about it, after the plan is submitted in March.
Provided, provided the money, provided we haven't had a, hired a contractor, the money is not locked.
That's right. That's right. That's, yeah, that's not going to happen right away.
Right, and, okay.
Okay. All right. Hey, anything else? Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to thank Tammy and Dan for last Friday for helping explain all this to me on the phone. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Well, thank you so very much. Okay, so we are up to our finance committee report. That's you. You're on.
Okay. Is it good I showed up just in time? Let's see, we had a thought-provoking meeting. Just thought-provoking.
Yeah, you did.
So as we, um, it was thought-provoking, because a heavy point in the meeting actually was, um, really based in S R. And we met at Franklin, and we really looked at, in particular, some of the Franklin's infrastructure. And as we look at, as an example of a building, middle school, our only secondary building that isn't completely our condition, um, it was something to at least factor into our work going forward. Um, the other aspects that we looked at is our capital maintenance projects and our referendum-approved work. Capital maintenance is moving along, and supply chain issues are hidden everywhere and everybody, whether it is, it don't matter what it is, it's everything. Um, so we have no finished projects, unfortunately, whether it's door hardware or furniture or whatever it is, but hopefully, um, some of those things will start to wrap up soon. We're quickly moving toward phase three, um, going out for bid soon. Um, actually, we would have had a walk-through, I believe, today, but it was rescheduled for the weather. And then, one of the more interesting aspects of our meeting is as we look at the future and we think long-term, one of the, I'll call it ancillary committees that report to finance, buildings, and ground is the boundary line committee. Boy, don't I remember that one. Um, but part of that is really looking at adjusting our boundaries for the students that we have. So to get a good picture of where are we going with students that we have and projecting. So right now, a lot of what we are looking at is really completely birth, not completely, but mostly based on birth rate. So our declining enrollment, we saw it, because the birth rates have declined. But as the city continues to bring in more industry, more housing, particular type of housing, where it's at, we need to really look at in depth, what does that mean? And what does it mean for our facilities? And, and use them appropriately before we even look to say, we need more money for something. So it'll be a, a group of, um, studies being done. Number one, looking at the student piece as we normally have done, but the economic indicators and other aspects going forward. And then, um, architectural firm, they have expertise of really looking at capacity utilization that is a little bit more sophisticated than Greg walking around going, yep, empty classroom. Which was fun and it was decent. It'll be interesting to see what the experts come up with. Um, but those three studies are going to be done and, and completed by the end of this school year. Um, so we'll be, be able to have. year, so we'll be, be able to have a Boundary Line meeting later on, that'll be more robust than we historically have had. So, meeting in a nutshell.
Thank you. Anybody questions, or? So when are we thinking about this Boundary Line meeting? Like...
It will probably be, I'm guessing, it'll probably roll into May, June. It'll be based on when the studies are completed.
Okay, so you don't, you don't, you see it happening pretty quickly after the studies are completed?
Yes.
That we just sort of present the data.
Well, because technically, I'm already late having the meeting, because we didn't have one last year because of the situation, and this year we could, but if we looked at the boundary lines of what we have for student enrollment, it wouldn't mean as much as opposed to as we look at future, because then at least we can say, what do we need to look at? Are the information and the great work that was done on the boundary lines, is that still where we want to be?
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
All right, great.
Thank you. Okay, so let me see here, we're up to any summary board requests. I don't think I have anything new, nothing new handed to me, no? Okay. Future meeting dates and times. Ms. Jensen, could you help us out with that?
It would be my pleasure.
Thank you.
There will be a special Board of Education meeting on Monday, February 28th, at 5:00 PM, here at the Educational Services Center, that is a closed meeting. And then our next Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March 8th, at 6:00 PM, here, as well as the Educational Services Center.
Thank you very much. Okay, looks like we've reached the end of our agenda.
Just for that meeting, I will be sending out further information tomorrow or Thursday, so please watch your emails so that you're prepared for that workshop on Monday a little bit better, so you're up to speed as to where we're at, okay?
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, we've hit the...
Close, correct?
What's that?
I want to ask to close session.
Yes, after this, so we're going to, we're going to adjourn this meeting, and then, or let's take a, can we take a little break? Okay, a couple minutes? All right, and then we'll go into close. All right? Thank you.